Mendoza?
Here.
Cho?
Here.
Hilpern?
Here.
Hernandez?
Here.
Tanja Budi?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Cartha?
Here. So, we have one discussion item for this evening regarding the use of police and student resource officers in our schools. I want to thank you all for being at this meeting. I think this is a really important discussion. I think it will be, at times, a difficult discussion, but I think it's a necessary one for us to be having right now. I think it's an opportunity for us to really put our equity practices and equity lens into practice, to really think about how we are supporting students, particularly our most marginalized students, our students of color, engaging educator, parent, community voice around what those policies and practices should be, and not just accepting what we've been doing over the years as what we should continue doing, but really putting a critical lens on whether or not we're really doing the best thing to support students. So I think this is a really important conversation to have. I think it's also an opportunity for us to put our equity learnings into practice. You know, we've all been through Beyond Diversity and know that one of the conditions that we have to manage is experiencing and working through our discomfort. And I imagine that there will be some of that this evening, but we'll work through it together. We'll hear from a variety of voices, and I don't expect that at the end of the night we'll have a fully baked policy to move forward with, but we'll have a better sense of where we need to be heading and what we need to be doing and really putting students at the center. So thank you all for being here and engaging in this important discussion. I don't know if you have some things to say?
So why don't I start with a few opening remarks, and then members of my team and I will walk through a short slide presentation, and then we'll open it up to conversation with a panel of community members and the board, and then absolutely open up for public comment. And I hope that if you're here as part of public comment that you've signed up on the sheet outside, and if you haven't, please do, so that we can make sure that we can accommodate everyone who's here. So let me join SUNY, the board, and the senior administrative team in welcoming everyone. I too am very interested and very engaged in the conversation that we're about to have, and as much as anything to get community voice on the issues that we will bring forward, recognizing that we may not come to closure tonight, but we are really inviting the voices of the community. I do want to be transparent and just welcome and let everyone know that we're joined tonight by Ryan Glue. And Ryan Glue is sitting in the second or third row, is a commander in the police force here for the Evanston Police, and he is a parent of a fifth grader at Dewey. And he's here as a citizen, he's here as a member of the police force, and he's here to listen and learn like many of us. And I just want to make sure that people know that as we move forward. There have been concerns that have been raised about police in our schools, and whether we call the police police, or call them school resource officers, they are police. And the question that has been raised by many community members, by board members, and by members of our team is, when should educators and administrators call the police, and when should they not? When should we call the police, and when should we not? And we are welcoming that sort of input from all of you, all of you tonight, as we move forward. And the questions, many of the questions that have come out have centered on questions of what policies do we have at the district level, and what procedures do we have? And we will talk about that. We have limited policies that are very specific. We do have some guidelines that principals follow that we'll talk about in our presentation. But we want to really think about what we do moving forward in terms of building policy that reflects the needs of the school community and the community, and then building administrative procedures. We do have a draft memorandum of understanding that we are working through the police department. It's very similar to what District 202 just approved, and this is as much to permit police officers, when they do come on our campus, our campuses, to have the cameras that they are now sporting, and to have that as available. And so that will come back to a board conversation later on. And then just to set the stage, we have two school resource officers that are assigned to our 18 schools and centers, and in contrast, ETHS has two school resource officers assigned to their one campus that they have. As we start, and as SUNY suggests, we want to center this conversation on students and on two of the protocols that we are using actively in the district. Through our Courageous Conversations training, we have agreements and conditions, and we are committed to isolate race, and I want to just stress that. We're not going to shy away from the issues of race and race in policing in America, in Chicago, and in Evanston. And so that's something that is really quite important to this conversation, and we want to encourage that. We also will, as SUNY suggested, we will, I have the, we will experience discomfort, and we can expect that. And I think that's a good and healthy part of our work. Finally, we use a Racial Equity Impact Assessment Guide as a way of looking at the work that we're doing. And part of that is to push us and to encourage us to seek out stakeholder voice. And so this is part of the process tonight, and we will continue that as we develop the types of policies that are necessary as we move forward. So as I said, we're going to isolate race. Race plays an essential role in a discussion about policing, no matter where we are, and especially as it relates to our schools. And I want to recognize this, and I want to recognize, just as I think about my own person, I'm a white male, and I have had my own interactions with the police, as well as others in the room who've had interactions with police, and we bring that to the conversation. And so we want to feel open and engaged around what does race mean as it relates to police. And then the other piece that is part of our conditions from our Courageous Conversations protocol is to reflect on and to respect multiple perspectives, because we all bring multiple perspectives and multiple lenses to anything that we do, and especially in a public policy forum like this on issues that are so important to all of us individually and collectively. So I have multiple roles as superintendent. I have to work to ensure that our schools and our classrooms are safe, nurturing, and welcoming. As superintendent, I also have to ensure that our schools are safe and secure. And in part of that role of making sure that our schools are safe and secure, I need to, and we as an administrative team, maintain partnerships with the Evanston Police Department and the Skokie Police Department, in case there's an incident, an incidence that is threatening, and especially threatening to lives in our schools. In suburban school today, I don't know what was resolved, but there was a person who brought a rifle to a school. And so I know that as superintendent, in those very serious times, which we pray does not happen in District 65 or in 202, that I have to, we have to maintain close relationships with our police. And yet, as we do that work, we are calling to question the role that the police play in our schools. I actually see the school resource officers as resource officers, and in some ways as the first responders of the first responders. So again, in those critical incidences where we need police to respond to something that is threatening the lives of our children, our students, our teachers, our educators, families who are around our schools, our administrators, I want to make sure that we have the types of relationships so that we can problem solve as fast as we can. The school resource officers have proven to be folks who understand our schools, know the administrative team, know our principals, know some of our teachers, know some of our students, and so those roles have been important. And yet, we call the question, under what circumstances should we engage school resource officers? Let me expand it. Should we even engage school resource officers? And if they have to be called on, what are our collective expectations? And then finally, what suggestions do all of us have for policy and practice? These are the questions that we'll pursue tonight. So let me quickly, and I'll go back and forth on Delip Kelgade, the Assistant Superintendent of Schools, and Joyce Partz, the Assistant Superintendent for Special Services, and I will touch on a few things our other colleagues will also chime in. As I mentioned, using the racial equity lens, focusing on isolating race and the importance of multiple perspectives, and not ignoring and actually understanding the history of racism that exists, and the issues of institutional racism that exists in District 65 are part of this conversation. I'll turn to Delip for a bit of a background on some of our police partnerships in our schools.
So part of the background, and what I was asked to provide is a little bit of some historical context and some of the current guidelines around what's guiding some of the work that's happening around our SRO interactions and partnerships. What I've learned is that the SRO program was the first initiated as part of the DARE program in the early 80s. It was later transitioned, from my understanding, around early 2000 into the school resource officer program. That part of that evolution was to develop a way in which schools would have police officers who would be able to develop relationships with parents, staff, and students for the purpose of being more supportive, and you'll see further down the role, the slide, which is really to avoid authoritative relationship between the police and the schools. It was really, the focus was how can police play a role of being mentors, guest lecturers, serve at community events, and really extend the way in which law enforcement was seen. And also, as a, really as a guiding principle in our schools, there is no, there has never been in terms of K-5 arrests, really avoiding any of those situations, particularly in our elementary school spaces. But also, while there have been a few instances of students arrested in middle school, I know that over two years ago, Dr. Goran met with the police department and really made an agreement to avoid any type of arrest in all of our schools. Do you want to go to the next slide? Okay. So in terms of, as I mentioned, so really mirroring what the National Association of School Resource Officers guidelines are, our current relationship or the partnership that exists and is attempted to be pursued by the SROs in our school is really meant to focus on building relationships with children and adults in the schools, to supervise emergency drills, to ensure that they are available to support school staff when there are significant crises. And in terms of crises, I want to underscore that really schools have an affirmative responsibility to do as much as possible to work with students, parents, and teachers, to prevent students from automatically being referred to police, and to try to deal with as many issues as possible in the school without contacting police. This is a huge part of our investment, is our CPI training. We have in all of our schools, social workers, and so really, when we talk about a significant crisis, it's really about when there's threat to self and threat to others, that really, the goal is to really, those are the cases where police or ambulatory support is called upon to support in the schools. Also, we draw upon our police in situations where there are situations of sexual abuse, violent or criminal activity in schools that raise that level of significant level investigation. And lastly, provide youth-focused approach, including restorative practices when responding to families who have filed police reports. So often, our principal or school may make a decision regarding a case, and a parent may decide that, no, that's not what I want, and will go and file a police report. And at that point, because of the partnership, what will happen is the police department will communicate that to a school resource officer, rather than a, in most cases, to a traditional police officer, like somebody who may be on duty. And then that, because of the SRO program, that individual will understand, so we're going to use restorative practices, we're not going to arrest a student even though you're very upset. And these are things even personally, as a principal, I've experienced where the police officer will approach it from a more guiding that parent into a restorative place. I'm not saying all the time, but that is the intent, and I've observed that as well.
So there are a wide range of issues and concerns that we've been talking about and that we will open up for conversation as well. Again, just based on the racial history, not only in this country, but in our cities, that it's important for us to recognize the concerns that Black residents specifically, but other residents who are people of color and other people who have been marginalized have with police and policing. And even though we say the school resource officer is the school resource officer, and then there are on-duty officers, the school resource officer is a police officer, and they're on duty, and they're doing the work that they're deputized to do. So we, again, want to reflect the fact that the racial history of our country and policing, there's an intersection that is worth talking about. We do, as I said, depend on well-trained first responders in case of emergency situations. We've been talking a lot, and as we think about the budget process that many of you just heard, about school-based and district-level capacity for de-escalation and responding to mental health needs versus depending on or asking the police for these same concerns or these same issues. And when I'm done with these bullets, I'll ask Joyce if you wouldn't mind walking through a few of the steps on what does de-escalation mean as educators in schools and school buildings, and running from the central office here. We have been talking about the next steps with our school resource officers, and we've engaged with the Evanston Police Department leadership around a uniform change. And the police leadership has been very open to having the police, the SROs, be in our schools in more, they still will have some sort of police-designated clothing, but in less of the, if I may, the regalia that officers wear all the time. We've asked for, and for the SROs to participate in the Beyond Diversity training and the SEED trainings, part of our equity training, and indeed, in our last Beyond Diversity training, one SRO and another, three officers, were two SROs, two SROs and another officer actually participated in the Beyond Diversity, so we were pleased to see that. And as I said, we are revising our current guidelines for when police are called, and of course, tonight's conversation is going to influence where we go from here and where we go with the established guidelines that principals actually use. Joyce, I'll pause for a minute, and just so that we're all on the same wavelength, talk a little bit about de-escalation and what happens in a school setting and what should happen in a school setting.
Well, one of the number-one things that we train staff and principals on regarding a situation where a student, a child, may be upset, may be feeling very vulnerable, angry, could be aggressive, is really to work with that student, to listen to that child, to hear what that child is saying, and not to be judgmental. It's best when kids are feeling upset or escalated to give them personal space, to move back, to not move in with that child, but to move back and not to talk at the child. Give them some time to think and to calm down and to relax. We want to not overreact when a child is upset. It may take some time, and I think it takes time on staff's part and principal's part to think that through, about how not to want to control the situation or immediately get a child to be calmer, but to let the child work it through, with, again, giving the child space and time to really begin to think about things, pull themselves back together. Clearly, we don't want to be threatening to a child at that time. We're focusing on their feelings. We don't want to get into a confrontation with the child by saying, you need to do this, you need to go here. We really are waiting for them to take the space and the time that they need to pull themselves back. I think we want to set limits with the students, so we want them to, you know, after a while, and I'm going to give you about five, 10 more minutes, and then we're going to try to regroup and see where we're at, at this point in time. But I think we also have to really choose wisely about what we insist upon, because not everybody is ready to come back to class, to come back to a situation at the same time. Everybody has their own baseline, and I think that that's a piece that all of us have to learn and have to be sensitive to and to take time with when a student is upset. So those are really the de-escalation kinds of techniques that we want to do, to honor each child in terms of where they are, and to take some time in our thinking of working with the child.
So these are possible next steps. Again, please take this, and we should have put the word "draft" on here, just ideas that, and again, we're doing this to tee up the conversation that will start with the panel, and then board members, and public comment. Obviously incorporating feedback from tonight's discussion. We want to spend a little time exploring how other K.A. districts work with local police, and examples of the types of policies and procedures that they have. We do want to finalize the memorandum of understanding with the EPD, with the Evanston Police Department, with regard to the cameras that they have now instituted. We want to solicit the voice of educators, administrators, and students on these issues more than we've had the time to do already, and I think that's a really important thing. And then our next steps are really around developing district policy and procedures that reflect the feedback that we hear from you, from the board members, on anything we presented, and on anything that you feel like you want to present, because that's going to help us to develop the next steps around policy and practices for the district. So I'm going to invite our panelists to come up, Mariana, Patrick, Fuchsia, Michael, and Meg, and come to the front. And we start with a few prompts of questions. Under what circumstances should we engage the school resource officers? If and when they're called upon, what are their expectations? Sorry that those don't have names on the back. And what suggestions do you have for district policy and administrative practices? And please, I mean, we would love for you to use these as prompts, and then we are more than willing to listen to a deeper voice on what your concerns are as we start the evening's conversation. And I welcome Lisa Harries, who's also from the District Educators Council, which is our teachers' union. Should we just go my left to right, since that's easy, or, let's just do that? Patrick, please. And please introduce yourself and jump right in.
Sure. Well, good evening. My name is Patrick Keenan Devlin. I'm the Executive Director of the James B. Moran Center for Youth Advocacy. For those who are unfamiliar with the Moran Center, we provide integrated legal and mental health services for Evanston youth and their families, trying to support children at home, at school, and in our community. So the first thing that I want to just say is thank you, Dr. Goran, for inviting me. I think it was a risk to invite me, and I appreciate being part of the conversation, and I actually really appreciate your leadership in convening this discussion, so thank you. This also should be said, that no child's emotional distress should be met with a police response. And it's right that we're horrified by an image like that. We cannot and should not minimize the trauma of a child's or a school community's adverse contacts with law enforcement. The Moran Center adheres to a holistic, restorative, and collaborative, trauma-informed vision. This means we approach a child in crisis by asking, what has happened to you, and not, what is wrong with you? We believe in the restorative principle that when children cause harm or act out, even in the most aggressive ways, that the harm both reveals their needs and makes visible the ways we are failing them as a community. We believe it then becomes our obligation to ask, what does this child need? Who within our community can meet those needs? And how can we work together to address the needs of that child and their family? Within the restorative justice framework, our obligation is to find and strengthen and maybe possibly develop children's relationships within school and within our community. We should be uncovering and nurturing and calling upon such relationships for all children within our district as our first line of defense in response to children's pain and their hurt. It is our obligation not to criminalize a child's needs, but to recognize, identify, and meet them. But first, we, and I mean all of us, the big "we," must see the child as a child and as a member of our community who is suffering. It is also our obligation to acknowledge and fight against the structural systems bearing down upon children of color in our community. We must recognize and address the implicit, explicit biases and white supremacy that cause daily trauma and violence to our children and families of color. So often, our responses, even the best intention, can cause harm. So stemming from my professional experience in advocating on behalf of children and young adults in classrooms and courtrooms in this community, I am convinced that law enforcement officers should not be permanently assigned to schools and should only be contacted when there is a real and immediate threat to a student, teacher, or public safety, which is admittedly and sadly part of our nation's current state. We must be mindful that police presence in schools compromises the rights of students, disproportionately including students with disabilities and students of color, and directly contributes to the school-to-prison pipeline. Now, I know that Commander Glue is in the room, and I would also like to recognize that I know even very well, and personally, many of Evanston's police officers and school resource officers, and have tremendous respect for them. However, it's the policy, not the officers, that's inherently flawed. I'm also not here to admonish Dr. Goran, or even Dr. Witherspoon, or Chief Cook, for the policy of assigning law enforcement to our schools. The Moran Center has actually never officially taken a formal position on police in schools, I found out, which is why I'm limited tonight in expressing my personal opinion and not the position of the agency. But, but, like District 65 School Board, the Moran Center's Board of Directors will likewise be discussing this topic at their next meeting in light of a crisis, and they're eager to be part of this ongoing discussion with the district and performing their due diligence. I do have some initial thoughts, but I don't have any fully-vetted, fully-developed policy recommendations for you tonight. But what I know of a wrong response that has invited all of us here tonight, I am happy that that response has invited the right questions. And so what are those questions? What do children in crisis need? What are children's existing relationships, points of connection within the building, the school building? Who should respond to children in crisis? What kind of training does that person or that team need? How can we make somebody like that or a team like that available to every child in crisis within our community? Moran Center strongly believes that we must meet children's needs with members of our school community who are on-site, who are trained in best practices for de-escalating children in a mental health crisis, trusted teams of adults who have been given the proper training, resources, and context to respond to the entirety of the situation. Kids are just trying to figure out how to explore and manage their emotions, and as adults, we are entrusted with guiding them. And there are already trusted, experienced adults in our school buildings. At the Moran Center, I have seen firsthand how District 65 school social workers work with dysregulated students and achieve unbelievable outcomes. It is my hope that this crucial community conversation and outrage will force us to, one, examine the lessons and truth, condemn the school-to-prison pipeline, and evaluate where current policies may inadvertently be facilitating the pipeline, and take proactive, systemic steps to disrupt it. Three, to acknowledge where we are lacking the appropriate resources- Three, to acknowledge where we are lacking the appropriate resources, protocols, and training. And four, to build upon existing relationships, enabling us to respond quickly, expertly, and compassionately to our children in crisis. As a community partner, the Moran Center again welcomes the opportunity to be part of this ongoing discussion and help answer these very complicated questions, who are ready to roll up our sleeves and get to work with you. So thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Fuchsia, and I'm here as representative for the ABC Group. I am a parent here in the district. I reached out to the ABC team, as well as the Hispanic affinity group, and other parents that I trust, as well as a friend that I have on the police department with regards to the questions that you emailed to us. So first, when thinking about the circumstances under which we should engage SROs in our schools, I think that we need to talk about the logistics of actually calling 911, and how long it takes for an officer to get into the building. Within that time that it takes for that officer to come into the school, we have people in place already that are trained to deal with and to handle children that are upset, that are in their emotions and in their feelings and taking it out on the classroom, or teachers, or other students. We have that already in place. So given that, I don't know that I really believe that by the time the officer gets there, that they're still an issue. So when I was looking at the policy that we have in place already, yes, we should call the police if there are weapons in the school; yes, we should call the police if there are drugs in the school. But then we also have to take into consideration this last line where we're talking about battery, and I feel like that term is open for interpretation. And I'm not sure that we should be using that in our policy because we don't know where the caller, where their perspective is coming from. So what I'm thinking about, when we should consider calling the police or calling 911, I do feel like perhaps, you know, if there's an uncontrolled behavior that's present and it's ongoing and it's prolonged danger to the staff, it's beyond the physical capability of the people that are trained in the building to handle the situations, then yes, perhaps, you know, we should be calling an SRO into the building. But this is if our interventions that we have in place are not working, and only then. And truth be told, I also agree with you that the framework that we have in place for calling the police is also, you know, like you said, the school-to-prison pipeline. And I don't want to further perpetuate that. And I think that we also need to take into consideration that our children are seeing which students are being made to have these police interactions. And given the fact that our children of color are disproportionately being disciplined, we're only further perpetuating systemic racism, and we're solidifying stereotypes for all people that are bearing witness to these interactions. This includes our youngest community members as well, and they take what they see, and they carry it with them. They take these stereotypes with them, and it further adds to the system that we're living in now. I do feel like, and I'm glad that you address this here, that if an SRO is called in, that they should not be in uniform. I would appreciate them being in plain clothes so they look like everybody else in the building. Maybe they should wear a badge that identifies them, like a lanyard, just like the people that work for the district do. And if we are having our SROs come into the building, they do need to engage with the community. They need to build this relationship and this trust with our staff members, and with our students, with our parents, and this is only happening at some of our buildings. It's not happening in all of our buildings. And this is, this is happening with the same SRO across the buildings that this person's responsible for. There is a difference in the way that our students are being treated, depending on what building they're in. So what I would like to suggest is that perhaps when we're thinking about building community with our SRO, that we are calling this person in to volunteer within our schools, to be a part of events. Maybe we need to have a meet and greet with this SRO, and I think that this would further add to this idea of community policing and can only help with the relationship with the police in the long run. I know personally, thinking of personal experience, I was taught, number one, with regards to the police, to not trust them. That was the first lesson I learned about the police, and that lesson has stayed with me. So when I see the police, I have a reaction that makes me not want to engage. And this is not just for me, this is still happening. I feel like these SROs should also be trained in working with various populations within our, within our schools. They need to work first hand-in-hand with the crisis teams that we have in place, they need to be working with our principals, they need to be working with our social workers. They should be second in line to the crisis teams we have currently, and trust is key for this. And if an SRO has to be called into the building, then I feel like the social worker or the crisis team should be the person that leads this conversation. And if SRO has to be involved, then they should have some sort of safety word to say, you know, where they're saying, "I'm here to help", you know, as, because if our first, if our initial response when we see a police officer is that "you're here to do me harm", we need to have that reassurance from them verbally that that's not the case. We need to see that. I also think that if a police officer is going to visit our schools, that that interaction should, should be with the adults, but I also feel like our staff members should be emailed or texted to let them know that there's a police officer in the building, and our children should be kept within their classrooms, and they should not see this interaction. If by the time the SRO arrives at the school and the child is calmed, then there is no need for the police officer to have an interaction with this child. Why would we add to the trauma that this student might feel and carry with them if we don't have to? And an SRO should never, ever, ever be called as a scare tactic for our children. This is not [inaudible].[1096.83][1096.83](applause) We don't need them in the buildings intimidating our students, and intimidating our parents, and intimidating our staff. I believe wholeheartedly that if I feel like I can't trust the police, then I'm pretty sure that there are staff members within the district that feel the same way I do. So we're not just causing harm to our children, we are causing harm to everybody across the And in saying this, I also think that we need to take into consideration that we do have a population of families that are undocumented. There will never be trust with the police with these families. How can there possibly be, especially in the climate of our country right now? We don't need the interaction with the police for these families. So even if we're trying to build community with our SROs, we have to keep that in mind, that this may never be the case for everyone in our buildings. So what I would like to suggest is that when we are thinking about updating our policy, our current policy, that we need to track the data for when our police are being called. We need to know who the police are being called on. I want to know the race of the child, I want to know the age of the child, I want to know what grade they're in, what school they're at. I want to know who is calling the police on this child, I want to know what building they're in, and I want to know what race they are, I want to know how many times they're calling the police on children. This needs to be tracked. I want to know when these incidents happen, where did they happen, and why did they happen? I feel like if we're going to be updating the policy, that we also need to have more Black and Brown social workers and psychologists in place, and these individuals can...[1231.08][1231.08](applause) And when I'm saying this, I'm saying that these individuals cannot suffer from internalized racism, because that only further perpetuates the system of damage that's being done to our children and our community. There's a lot of things that I stated previously that I also feel like should fit into this category of when we're updating the policy, including, you know, building the relationship with officers and being in plain clothes, and only being called when the school crisis team has exhausted all other options. I feel like restorative practices need to be put in place for these students that had the police called on them, because now they are dealing with trauma, and it's trauma that was inflicted upon them by somebody in the building that they have to see every day until they graduate out. I feel like, again, I feel like we need to define battery, because if we have students in a classroom and they're throwing this plastic cup, we could have a teacher that says, "I was battered." We can have a student says, "I was battered." It's a plastic cup. There's a difference. And unfortunately, our implicit and our explicit biases, they play a part in when the police are called. And we have no room to allow that to happen. And I also want to just mention that our policy does not mention that we call the police when there are threats made to other children. It only says threats to staff. When do we call the police if there are threats to children? Because this is coming up. People are talking about this. That also needs to be addressed within our policy. I also feel like if our SROs are going through seed training, and I'm going to say "seed" because I feel like beyond diversity is just not enough, if they're going through seed training, I don't feel like they should do it with other officers, because there is a fraternal order within police departments. And I feel like that could prohibit them from really taking in the lessons that we receive when we go through seed.
Let me begin by saying that I echo the sentiments of both Keisha and Patrick that spoke before me, but I also want to say that I'm a stickler for how things are set up, and this is one of the strangest setups in the world, because I believe that what I have to say is just as germane and important for the folks who are sitting behind me as there are for the folks who are sitting in front of me. And I was taught to not talk to people when they're, when they're behind me.[1435.42][1435.42](applause) So if you don't mind, I'm going to get up and come over here. Yeah. This is in no way indicative of the fact that I think I have anything more profound to say than what has been said before.[1459.11][1459.11](laughter) Let me straighten that out. Yeah, yeah, I'm okay. But I do think that it's important for us to know that barriers appear to be existing here with, with the community and then with the folks who are in administration, and we, we want to tear the barriers down because we're really all one community. And I know that you all are just stuck on this because the way the building has been constructed has you like this, but I think it's important for us to be engaged together. So I'm Michael Neighbors, and I represent the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, which is an historic organization that has been a part of civil rights advocacy since its founding in 1909. In 1917, the Evanston branch of the NAACP was founded, and I also serve as pastor of Second Baptist Church, which was founded in 1882, so there's 137 years, and then 102 years, and collectively that's 239 years of being Black in Evanston.[1531.01][1531.01](applause) So I want to, I want to begin by basically saying, you know, that I'm, I think that I'm still in shock. I'm just, I'm just profoundly in shock that what has brought us to the table here is a, is a six-year-old child.[1552.22][1552.22](applause) In light of the conversation that has been placed before us, we're looking at the national dialogue on race, we're looking at the state dialogue on race, we're looking at the city's dialogue on race, and then we're also looking at the district's dialogue on race, but we can't negate the fact that there was a six-year-old child that was at the center of this, of this situation that we're talking about right now. And when is it ever okay for anybody in a school district to call the police on a six-year-old? On a six-year-old? I have six children, they've all been six years old, and, and of my children, maybe three of them drove me crazy at six, but there was never a time when I felt like I was out of my capacity to control a six-year-old child. And, and what that has done, a six-year-old, Black, male child, what has done, has been done to that child, is probably already irreversible.
Yes.
And not only that, but if there were other children that saw what happened or that have heard what has happened already, we are continuing a vicious cycle of injustice that exists called racism in this country, and it's particularly related to being African-American, and in this particular case, an African-American male child. I just do not understand how, in our community and in this district, which has so much focus on equity and so much focus on inclusivity, how something, when do we stop coming to these meetings? When do we stop hearing about children who are using racial epithets in elementary schools in our town? When do we stop coming to these meetings? I'm not sure what the answer is. I don't believe that it has to do specifically with the administration. I don't believe that it has specifically to do with the schools, but there is something that is wrong. There's something that's wrong in America, there's something that is wrong in our community, there's something that is wrong in our school district. And I think that a part of being able to address that is having the strength and the courage to be able to call meetings like this where everybody has a chance to speak their minds. And I think that this is just the first step. But you've got to understand, at a certain point, we just get tired of meetings.[1732.36][1732.36](applause) And so I did have some notes that I prepared, because as you all know, I'm a Baptist preacher that preaches from a manuscript, and I admire my colleagues who did not do that, but I want to share just a few words and, and then go from there. The reality of race, the critical need for dialogue, every time an issue related to race arises continues to be fostered and to grow in our nation and in our community. The NAACP has been the vanguard that has been related to civil rights as an advocacy since its founding in 1909. I think that it's important for us to know and to understand that our branch in Evanston has over 300 members who are part of the NAACP. Our infrastructure is such that we have 12 standing committees, and one of the standing committees is an education committee- And one of the standing committees is an education committee. The chair of our education committee would certainly be here now. She is Terri Shepherd, but she was involved in a significant accident a couple of weeks ago that left her with broken ribs and broken ankles and that sort of thing. And so we continue to pray for her to grow. But I want to say that under no circumstances... And I think that my colleague said it a lot better, especially the lawyer who specializes in wonderful legal lease. And I appreciate that. Under no circumstances should a school call for police assistance on a six-year-old baby. If that child is a minority, a Black or Latino in a predominantly white system, one invites the potential for disaster. And I think that it's also important for us to understand that we must begin the process of working on creating an opportunity for resolution of this problem that is larger than the problem of just calling the police on a six-year-old child. Where does that stem from? Where does the notion stem from that it's OK to call the police on a six-year-old Black male child? It's not just the calling. It's not just the incident. But where does that lie? Where does it fester? And now we're talking about something that's deeper because it's not just an emotional kind of reality that might somehow be defined as white privilege or white entitlement, but we're also talking about the other things that have been mentioned, which include institutional racism, systemic racism and injustice that continues to exist and divide our community. The reality of being able to face that is to say, "We have it. It exists. It's real." And then the other part of that is somehow being able to engage in a sort of self-introspection and to ask the question, "Am I a part of supporting a system that is unjust? Am I a part of supporting an institution that continues to have blatant and radiant racism that exists that is affecting our children? That's affecting our staff? That's affecting our faculty? That's affecting the administration?" Because I believe that we're all sort of intertwined in this. And while this room may not be flowing over with people, what happened to that child somehow is interrelated to all of our lives. All of us should not be able to sleep well at night because of what has happened. Because if it happened once, then it may happen again. And of course, the questions arise, "How many times have the police been called to intervene on behalf of a six-year-old child?" And if you can show me that that has happened before, the next thing that I want to know is, "What was the race of that child? What was the gender of that child?" And I am not a betting man, but if I were, I would suggest that there has never been a time when the police were called to come in and to assist with a six-year-old child's behavior. And so we ought to feel horrible. We ought to feel bad that something like this happened. I'm not relating it to the teacher. I'm not relating it to the school principal. I don't even know who they are. But that something like that could happen in a place like this where we say, "This is the community where we want to raise our children. This is the community that we think is absolutely best for families who want to come in and reap the benefits of inclusivity and multiculturalism and living in a microcosm of the world so that when our children graduate from high school, they will go out and be leaders of the world instead of going out with an attitude that the world has it out for them." So we've got to do something. And some of the suggestions that I have, I think, are not nearly as specific as those who went before me. But we have to, as you said already, Dr. Goran, we have to develop a policy, but the policy has to be a rigorous policy that clearly outlines when a school calls police for non-life-threatening situations. And I'm almost certain that there should never be a time when the school calls the police for non-life-threatening situations unless it has to do with drugs. And then, secondly, I think that when you are writing that policy, you have to include every single entity that is in the community. The Evanston Police Department need to be included in that. Your own folks need to be included in that with regard to District 65. But you also have to include members of the community to be able to not only articulate their concerns, but to articulate them in a way where whatever policy is going to be written, it will be written through the contributions that they have made as well. And I know that's going to take longer, but it is critical and it is important. We shouldn't just have a public meeting like this, allow the community to hear a panel discussion, to have a few words, and then have no right to say, "We want to participate in whatever policy is going to be written." So I think that's important. I think it's important also to utilize ultimately significant resources in the community as it relates to race and discipline. I don't know how much you do that, but I think that's important. You've brought some great people in to work on these issues. But we have a wider community of nearly 80,000 people. And there are experts in this community that are experts in race. They're experts in discipline. They're experts in communication. And somehow, I think, there just needs to be a great, big, huge education summit on why Black folks are failing in the school system in Evanston. And we need to bring in... We need to bring in the best people in our community and perhaps the best people in the nation so that we can all hear from them and grow from them as well. And finally, I think it's important, and I think that you all are on the way to doing this, and these kinds of panel discussions prove it. But you need to begin to continue working on strengthening your network and collaboration with community partners. It's important for you to know, as difficult as your job is, you are not alone. I spoke here a few years ago and talked about how we are all a part of the beloved community. And even though we are often pointing at you because you have a difficult job and you hold the nature of our children in your hands, never, ever forget that you are a part of the community. You are a component of it. You are not a be-all and end-all entity all to yourself. You're interwoven in this community with District 202. You're interwoven into this community with the Police Department and with the city. You're interwoven into this community with the Latino population, with the African-American population, the Haitian population, the Belize population, the Jamaican population. We are all one. We are in the same community. And I think we're hurting right now because somehow we're existing as independent entities instead of our coming together. And so I want to charge you, I guess, if I can do that. I'm not in church, but I want to charge you to be serious about at least hearing this appeal to create a community-wide education summit as it relates to all of your ideas about inclusivity and all of your ideas about multiculturalism. It's not just about Black children. It's about all of our children. But it's particularly about our minority children as well. So in this summit, invite us all. Have it at Northwestern University somewhere so 5,000 people can be seated. And let's make that happen so that we can, out of that summit, come to a better understanding for forging our way into the future. Thank you.
I have to follow that. Right, so now I'm going to turn.
See, I'm modeling after her. You modeled, and I'm following the lead. My name's Meg Crewley, and I'm here tonight as...
Make sure you're speaking into the microphone, so...
My name's Meg Crewley. I'm the president of the District Educators Council, the teachers' union. This is Lisa Harries, who is another member of our executive board. Thank you for everything that you've shared tonight on the panel and what you've illuminated for the students that we support. I think this is an important conversation about how we support our students and the supports that our schools provide. And I hope that we can continue this, not just tonight, but ongoing. We talked to our DEC members, our teacher educators, and really just asked them about, what do they think about SROs and police presidents? And I will say that the view that many of us reflected on was really in a supportive role. And the way that we see SROs being used, for many of us, and I can speak from some of my experience, was in a supportive light and was about building relationships with students. And when they are in the schools, saying hello to kids and engaging in classrooms. A lot of teachers talked about times where the SROs were very supportive in working with families who might be going through a difficult situation. There was an example of a student who was lost. And SRO was actually able to help and get the student where they needed to go much quicker because they had familiarity with the school and the students in the school. So that was a plus. I will say that the one suggestion about how to engage, we felt we actually wanted more... Less formal visiting in the schools. So similar how we do fire prevention, and we have firefighters come in and do presentations around safety. Educators wanted to see the same sort of thing, and SROs not being used just in disciplinary situations, but being in more informal. Really, I think... Is your name Fuchsia? Fuchsia, you talked about those volunteer. They talked about basketball games, playing on the playground, sort of those more getting-to-know-you opportunities were some of the other things that educators talked about. But having those consistent visits to schools for community building and relationships. So that was the first thing that our educators said. First thing. Sorry, I'm just looking through my notes from our educators. They felt that the SROs really provided resources for educators and families to connect with when there were families who were or guardians in crisis. We did hear of some situations where the SROs were really more helpful when there were some families having some issues around DCFS. And that it was really important because the SRO had the relationship rather than, I think you called it, an on-duty police officer? Someone that they didn't know. So that the family was really comforted by having that. We do need to acknowledge, and you pointed that out, that there are many kids and families who have had some negative experiences with our police, whether it's ICE or being worried about other things. And we do need to think about how we can help support families and children in navigating that trauma. We felt that if and when... I'm just literally going through the questions. What are the expectations for engagement? It was really to help in support of a child or family. It might be helping with restorative practices. We definitely felt that if SROs are engaging in our schools, they needed to be introduced to all of the faculty, to all of the staff, and to all of the students. That they shouldn't just be seen, but that introduced to them. That there definitely should be communication with families and staff around what their purpose is and what they are doing. We thought that the SROs should be the first contact point if there is a security or safety issue. And I'm talking extreme. An active shooter situation. What suggestions we had? We really felt like it's important for the SROs to have some knowledge of child development, developmentally appropriate de-escalation strategies and trauma-informed practices. And we felt that when creating the policy, the policies need to make sure that they're communicated immediately. I talked about... And then some definitions was something that educators asked for. Defining what does harm to self and others mean? Defining what aggression is so that it's very, very clear. Defining what a use of a weapon as an object. So for example, you talked about the cup. So I can imagine a five-year-old might pick up this, and I can either use it as a lollipop or a weapon. So really defining what that looks like and especially along the developmental continuum of ages. Also thinking about when you're incorporating your policy and practicing is thinking about the frequency of incidents and the duration of time. We think that it's important for all staff in our district to be trained on de-escalation techniques, trauma-informed practices, and restorative practices. So that while we have... Our social workers have had a lot of great training. We think that it should be happening at all levels and not just at some. We would think that it might be helpful to have a flow chart of steps that should be taken. And obviously, we put 911 at the very, very, very end. And then I think one other thing to think about is the involvement of families in the flow chart. And so, for example, we did have teacher educators talk about families who actually said, "Please call." Right? So if that is a family request, where does that fit in? And then one thing that you really haven't addressed on is when does the ambulance get called? So if there's a medical or does the ambulance play into a different step? And that whoever is doing the calling needs to stay until the time. So whether it's a SRO, whether whoever it is staying until the guardian arrives. Is there anything I missed? Yeah, we had a lot of examples. But we, you know, I have to say, the educators during... You know, and we have over 750 of them. So I'll be honest that we didn't get to all of them. But the many people that we heard from really felt that the SROs had been really positive and that students, certainly at first, kindergartners at the beginning of the year were scared and wondered why the police were there. Something wrong. But after the next couple of times seeing them in the building, they actually were really excited to see them because they would just come in the classroom and say hi. And then it wasn't scary anymore. And the educators really talked about how that this was a way to try and change the narrative about how some young children were seeing police. So that's just to give some educator perspective. Thank you.
Thank you very much to all of you for your words and your thoughts. You've given us a lot to think about. I'm going to open it up to...
Board for questions, comments?
I had actually written comments, and they, in some ways, mirror much of what has been said. But I'm going to just go ahead and read what I wrote up. In 2017, in the United States, 1,147 people were killed by the police. Black people comprised 25% of those, while making up only 13% of the population. 34% of the individuals in the U.S. who are currently incarcerated are Black, though we only make up 13% of the U.S. population. African-Americans are incarcerated at five times the rate of whites. And the imprisonment rate for Black women is twice that of white women. In 2017, in Evanston, 61% of police contact cards were completed for Black juveniles, while only making up approximately 20% of the city population. Conversely, only 30% of contact cards were for white juveniles, who make up 70% of the city. It's perceived that this disparity reflects the disparity in quantity and quality of policing and the demographics of neighborhoods that are overpoliced and criminalized in the city of Evanston. I would then argue that the fear of overpolicing and criminalization of youth by the institution that is supposedly charged to serve and protect our community is real. The fear of the institution of policing intertwining itself with an educational institution whose records, as recently as 2016, showed similar disproportionate disciplinary data with Black-Brown students and students with IEPs being disciplined at two to five times the rate of white students and students without IEPs. An institution that is charged to educate our children and partner with us in preparing them for the world is real and founded. them for the world is real and founded, as far as I'm, as far as I'm concerned. The institution of policing does not have a record that indicates we should feel otherwise, nor do our local statistics. If what we are experiencing as a district are crises in our schools, depending on the content of those crises, I would contend that we need, what we need are trauma-informed schools to respond appropriately, professionally, in a restorative manner to children and families' demonstrated needs. I see no evidence of police being the appropriate entity to fill that role. I'm concerned at the use of SROs and any attempt to reframe that from what it is, which is police involvement with children. Our children don't need to be policed, they need to be taught. Our children are scholars, not criminals, and we need to treat them as such. They nor their parents shouldn't internalize any other message from us as an institution. We are charged with preparing, preparing them to be leaders and changemakers in this world, not captives. I'm concerned, given our recently, recent celebration of Black Lives Matter Week, and one of the demands being more social workers and less cops in our schools, that we are framing any discussion with the idea that police officers are benign presence. My question in response is benign, benign to whom? I look forward to a policy proposal that is empathetic to our community's needs and lived experiences, leveraging whatever appropriate resources and relationships we may need in order to do so.
Anybody else have any questions or comments, Joey?
Thank you for your comments and suggestions. What happened to you? What do you need? Are great questions. I cannot think of any scenario where I would call the police to help an escalated child. The, the bullet that reads engagement in investigations regarding sexual abuse, violence, or other criminal activity in schools, that goes through DCFS. DCFS has its processes, if they want to call the police, they can. If a parent were to talk to staff and say, go ahead and call the police, we have a right as staff to hear their advice and say, you can call the police if you want on your child, I'm not, I don't have to. When a child is escalated at school, we have the obligation in loco parentis to be the guardian of that child, and when they're escalated, they need someone who they know and who they think cares for them, not to outsource that to somebody that we call. I don't have anything against law enforcement, but I'm a white man, so I was raised to trust the police. I grew up in a home like that, and I understand that context. If a child has a weapon, if a child has brought something to school they shouldn't have, if this, you know, the definition of battery, if a child is getting aggressive with adults, again, in elementary schools, little kids with well-trained teams in non-violent crisis prevention, in most cases can intervene and restrain a child to the point that they can call and have an ambulance come. In no scenario do I think that a child in crisis needs a police response. Maybe a ride to a facility where they can have a medical evaluation or intervention. And again, an ambulance looks different than a cop car, right? I would use the police to help coordinate communication with an ambulance arriving or help lock down the building so that we can maintain privacy for a student. I can think of ways to use the police, none of which to engage with the child. Joyce, I think training staff for rational detachment, Joyce isn't here anymore? You mentioned staff, or she mentioned staff have, needing to rationally detach from situations so they can make rational decisions is important. Just because a child has escalated or reached a crisis point doesn't mean staff need to escalate with the child, they need to respond to the child based on what they need, because the child is telling us that they're having a moment where they need support. I would call the, I can think of one time I would want to call the police, and that's if a kid has fled the grounds. If a child has run from the school, they're off of campus, I would call the police, while I would ask my team to follow the child so that the police can help search and rescue. That's different than catch the child, help find the child, help keep the child safe. I think even if you've called the police or called 911 and the police were the first ones to respond, I think staff have an obligation to direct the police to stay outside the situation and advise in a situation, but they don't have to be present in a situation to be involved in it. In non-violent crisis prevention, when you have to restrain a child in crisis, you have multiple people. You often say the person restraining the child isn't the person talking to the child. That's on purpose, you don't have the person holding a child be the voice of reason. You want the voice of reason to be in front of them, someone probably that they know and can relate to. All those people have to be people who the child can, the next day possibly, come back and no care for them. The police are never those people. I think in, it was at, I don't have a date on this, but January 23rd, 2017, this board adopted a resolution declaring District 65 a safe haven school district. The board declares that all District 65 schools to be a safe haven for students and families threatened by immigration enforcement or discrimination to the fullest extent permitted by law. We were concerned as a body about what law enforcement in schools might do to the sanctity of the school being a safe haven for children and families. There are 12 points here, I won't read them all, but the fact that this body has adopted something similar before because we thought ICE might arrive to talk to our families who may be undocumented. This is a starting point to a conversation, but I think there could be similar policy or a resolution that asks for a definition for the relationship with our police force who play a pivotal role. A gentleman with a shotgun walking into a high school at 6:30 this morning warrants a police response. A six-year-old, a child, a baby? I, I don't, I don't support the police involvement in that way. I think if they arrive because they hear a 911 call, which happens, I think there has to be people on the ground who can coordinate their arrival and, and have them be in a place, supportive in a place outside of directly intervening with the child.
Thank you. I have a quick, I have a quick tactical question before I go any further. I want to understand the compensation structure for the SROs. Does the district pay the police force for the staffing of the SROs? Is it a gift to our district?
It's supported by the city, so we do not pay resources, nor, nor does the high school.
Okay.
Is that the same for Skokie?
We don't, in Skokie, we don't have school resource officers assigned, and if we wanted school resources assigned, we'd have to pay for them.
Are Skokie schools use Evanston SROs?
Our Skokie schools can use our SROs.
They have a liaison structure, so they'll come by, they'll do the supervision for the...
For drills.
For drills, but it's really beyond that in terms of a more formal, like, support structure, not that like that.
Thank you for that point of clarification for me. I just want to quickly express the, my frustration with the incident that preceded this conversation. I don't understand how, after the two years that I've been a board member and the attention that we've paid to equity in our school district, how this could happen. I think it's a massive failure, and especially all the time and attention and resources that have been put in place with the equity trainings, the crosswalks, the equity lenses, the equity policies that we have in place, for this to have, this policy to have just slipped through the cracks. I think that the notion of forming a better relationship with the police is a very white-centric thought process, and I think that actually probably led to someone thinking they were doing the right thing by calling the SRO because they were in a position where they thought they had a good relationship with the police, not taking into account the feelings. And so I just really wanted to express my frustration was point one. Point two is really to echo the thoughts that I don't believe the police need to be the school resources, the school resource personnel, that if the city is willing to contribute resources to our schools, then we should look at school resource professionals that are psychologists or social workers.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to thank the community for coming out and bringing this issue to the needed attention that it needs, and I just want to express just my, my sadness with the image of a six-year-old having the police called on them. As a member of the policy committee, I want to express my commitment to ensuring that we create a policy that prevents this from ever happening again, and as it's been cleared here, that this is a partnership that we have with the state of Illinois and, and the police department. And I wanted to make the, the public aware of an act, Public Act 10984, which became effective January 1st of 2019. This act requires the Illinois Police Training Board to develop a training program for school resource officers to cover youth and adolescent developmental issues, educational administrative issues, prevention of child abuse, youth mental health treatment, and juvenile advocacy. So the police department is assigned, is assigning us, who is assigning SROs to our district, must provide the district with a certificate of completion of this training beginning the 1st of January 2021. So I think that this is an opportunity for us to ensure that the SROs that are being assigned to our district come with the knowledge to handle situations from, from the standpoint of child development. And so I just, I wanted to make the community aware of that and to know that we have to partner with our, with our police department and our, the SROs that are going to be assigned to know how to manage these situations going forward. But I think as several of our other members have expressed, it is not okay to call the police on a six-year-old, and I just, I want to make sure that that is heard loud and clear, and again, express my gratitude for the parent groups that are really stepping up these efforts to bring the attention, the education that's needed for the community and not allowing a situation like this to be swept under the rug because it's not okay.
And I echo everything everyone else has said. I, I think of how we make sure we have the capacity to focus on the trauma-informed care that needs to happen. You know, our schools are the number-one mental health care providers in the state. And to Meg's point, you know, I think we need to look at and evaluate internally, what is the right structure to ensure that potentially all of our staff have some level, and what that level is of de-escalation training, of trauma-informed care, and what will it take for us to implement that, and what are we willing to not do, because we have to make choices? And so, from, you know, kind of, our policy is step one, and then we have to make sure that we can execute on that policy and make sure the needs of children are, are being met, and that our teams are able to deliver against that. And so I think that is where I would also call upon our board. We're not only accountable for the policy, but we're accountable to the community to make sure we appropriate enough resources, however we have to do that, to make sure our teams are trained and educated in coordination with the equity work that's ongoing, but this is a specific set of skills. You know, we are all human, it is not easy work, and it, and it's very challenging when you want to serve the needs of a student and you're not sure how, and I know most of our educators do know how to do that, but I think there's probably a, a different level of education and training and support that our own adults need to be able to provide the appropriate service to our students. And we have to, we are accountable at this table to make sure that we can deliver on that, and so that would be a charge to us.
Just wanted to share a couple of things and a couple intersectional, intersectional things in my life. When I was a kid, I was a pretty, pretty bright kid. I lived in the north side of Chicago by Wrigleyville, and around 12-years-old, 11-years-old, had been out skateboarding with my buds, and I was coming back home, it was probably about 5:00 in the, in the evening, and get a cop, a policeman, squad car pulls next to me like, what are you doing out there? I'm like, nothing, I'm just heading home. And he's like, get, get in, get in the car. So they, they put me in the car. I'm like, what are you doing? Well, what am I doing? I'm not doing anything wrong, I'm just trying to get home. He's like, we'll see, we'll see what you did wrong. And so they proceeded to ride me around the neighborhood, and they were, say, they were looking through their computer, they're like, hey, what's your name? I'm Sergio Hernandez. I was scared, I was crying. Like, aren't you, aren't you the Sergio Hernandez that just murdered somebody yesterday? I'm like, no, that isn't me. So they went, proceeded to kind of just let me cry it out and, and, and eventually dropped me off by where I live. And they're like, you know what, stay off the streets. Previous to that, I actually trusted the, the police, so I lived across a police station. And we were pretty poor, so we would go, you know, they had a Christmas gift-giving day for, for kids who were around the neighborhood, so we would go there, and it used to be a place of comfort, and, and, you know, see all the kids from the neighborhood lined up, and this was like probably around 6, 7, just a few years younger, and, you know, there were policemen that would greet us, and it was nice, but it's just, these experiences are just, again, have, have been good with the police and, and then bad. And it seems that at a certain age, you know, children of color aren't, aren't to be trusted or are a menace. That, that's part of the, of our history as a country, is that we, and our implicit bias, and that we see children of color after a certain age, particularly males, particularly black males, as some, as subhuman. And that's a problem, and a problem that we see in the rhetoric at the national level, which is now coming down at the local level. And as we move forward with this equity work in this district, this is where the rubber hits the road. So we've done all the trainings, you know, we've created these equity lenses and these policies, but this is where it can fail, because then people start saying, well, you did all that, and now we're gonna, so what I've heard from other equity efforts in other schools, this is what I've read, is that, so we'll put in these policies in place, but then they'll see, well, now the kids are running the classroom, and now they get to do what they want, and these are the critics, when in reality, it's, it, it, we didn't build the capacity of the adults in the community to continue this work. And this is what I hear, what I'm hearing from, from our panelists. Actually, a couple of years ago, I was sitting where all of you are sitting, when we were, when we were trying to get the Black Student Achievement Report created, or when they came out, and also the Hispanic Achievement Report. So that was the start of, of this equity journey, not, not the start, but the continuation, because this work has been going on in this community for years, so let me, let me acknowledge that. So that, to me, that this, you know, to, we, we are still not done with the implementation piece, but there's pieces in place, there's frameworks in place where, again, could help us see these policy implementations and eventually the, the capacity building. these policy implementations and eventually the, the capacity building. Will happen because of these frameworks that we've set up. But it, it can't happen fast enough. We can't do it alone. We need you as, as parents and as community members. We need our institutional partners. We need the city of Evanston. We need the, the police department to help out. Because, again, I'm, I'm done with, with just school districts trying to fix it all. We can't. We really, really need all of your help. We need one another, as Reverend Neighbors was saying. And I'm all for having an education summit. That's the first thing I thought of when, when I heard about these incidents, like, you know, we need to talk as a community. We need to have an honest, honest conversation about the history of inequity and the lack of justice in our community and what can we do to really move forward. As an educator, so I taught for about 13 years and, you know, the first schools that I, that I was put in were, again, I worked in North Lawndale. I worked in South Lawndale, which is Little Village. So I worked with primarily Latino and then black students and families. And again, you know, they, these were communities that, again, have been historically devastated and under-resourced economically, socially. But I, I came in understanding that. You know, my, 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 my teacher education program taught me about these things. So whenever a child would act up in my classroom, it wasn't, was wrong with him. It's like, what resources can I find in this place that has very little resources to help this child and their family out? And again, there was very little to, to, to draw from. So to me, it's very surprising that in Evanston, you know, that we, we, we continue to struggle with this and we are a resource-rich community. So then we really need to, so then that, that begs the question about us trying to rethink how we're approaching problems. So, you know, when we, you know, the question to ask our institutional partners or our advocacy partners is that, are we trying to be the saviors? Are we trying to be partners? Because I think we're, it's a very, 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 very good question to ask. So in the work that we do, are we perpetuating this inequity and this injustice by trying to be saviors or partners with families? Right? So all of us need to ask ourselves this question because if, if, the, the answers are very clear. If you answer that you're being a savior, then you're part of the problem. And if you're being a partner with your neighbors and with your administration and your, and the school board members and colleagues, then, then you're part of the solution. We really need to try to find a way to be able to get to that place to really move this work forward. And it's not easy. It's not, it's not easy at all. And it's heartbreaking to see things like this occur, even though we've done this, this, these trainings and all that. But again, we're still early in the work and we really got to think about over 500 years of injustice and, 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 and cultural destruction that, that, that have happened. And, and we are just, we're like maybe two, three years into this in regards to this iteration of the struggle, which is a, has been a lifelong struggle and a centuries-old struggle for people of color. And so, so that also has to provide, give us some perspective. But we really, really can't take our, our foot off the, off the pedal on this and we really need to continue moving forward to, 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 to continue this work and, and see it through. And do the best we can to make, make, make it so that justice actually occurs in our lifetimes in this community. And that's all I have.
So like many of my, my colleagues here and what we've heard, I, I struggle with trying to figure out when it's okay to, to call the, the police, whether it's an SRO or another on-duty police officer on a child, whether that child is six or 12. I don't believe, you know, I think the, the relationship that the district has had with SROs or the police department is so longstanding that it's hard to think about moving away from it. But I do think that that's where we need to be. But I acknowledge, and I think, Patrick, I'm going to paraphrase what you said. I think, you know, we have to acknowledge where we don't currently have the appropriate resources and training in place. I think we do have a lot of trained, great trained staff in place, but I don't think we have enough. And I, I believe when I've, you know, seeing this presentation, hearing from, what I'm hearing from our educators, what I hear is that SROs are being used as a resource when really what we need are mental health experts or child development experts. But we're using SROs because that's what is, is available and essentially free for our district. Lindsay, I think you're spot on that we need to talk to the city about reallocating the funds that are being used to pay SROs and to see if we can get mental health experts, child development experts to, and, and I don't, you know, I think that's a, definitely a conversation we need to have. I think we need to have a conversation about what additional, you know, do we need more social workers? Do we need, I don't believe we currently have a dedicated social worker at each building. Do we need to consider that? Is there a dedicated social worker at each building?
Are they a half-time FTE or a full-time FTE?
Full-time. Every single split.
I apologize. All right. I apologize that I was.
School psychologists, we may have more splits, but not.
The social workers, okay. Regardless, I think what I am overwhelmingly hearing though is that we need additional supports, that what we have is not sufficient, that we do need to make sure that all of our educators at least have some degree of training in trauma-informed practices. So it's, so then it becomes a question of how are we going to pay for that? And I, I think we have to be honest and as we're thinking about budgeting for next year, we, if this is a priority for our community, and I think that we can, can safely assume that it is, if it's a priority for this board, then what, what does that look like in our budget? Because as we often hear, a, a budget is a reflection of our values. And so, so let's, let's take a look at that. And in terms of next steps, I feel like, you know, it's, it's easy for us to say, okay, let's put a policy in place and say we will no longer accept in the extreme circumstances of if a child has, you know, run off the premises. I would include if a child has a weapon, I, I'm not comfortable asking our educators to, to have to intervene if there's, a child brings a weapon to school. I think that's something that will be appropriate to call police. But except in those extreme circumstances, if we say we are not going to call police, what does that mean practically for now till the end of the year? What does that mean? What can we put in place? What can we reasonably put in place so that we can avoid this type of situation? But still make sure that our schools and our educators and our administrators have the support they need. Whatever, however they are using SROs to provide that support, what can we offer them as an alternative from here to the end of the year? And then starting next year, and I think this is, I would say, is a charge to Dr. Gore and you and your team of what does a plan for next year to be, to have more trauma-informed schools look like? In terms of training that would be available to staff, in terms of resources, you know, what's your recommendation to us? Hearing what you've heard and knowing that, that the SROs as a relationship we want to move away from, how do we fill in the gap that SROs have been used? I agree that it's important to have adults in the building that students have relationships with that, that can de-escalate situations. I just strongly disagree that that person needs to be or should be a police officer. Whether, and I will say whether they're in plainclothes or not. I just, I, I think we're using that because that's what we've done for so long. And I just think it's time for us to, to move away from that practice. But I think we need to know what that practically means for us. We can't just take away a resource without putting something else in place that, that is frankly better able to meet the needs of students. And to, the students in crisis are students who need emotional support. They don't need police intervention. So that is, that's what I see as a next step. I do think we need to understand practically what that means in place. What's the guidance that's going to be given to schools for the rest of this year and then looking forward to next year? What does a policy look like? And then how do we support that policy with sufficient resources and training?
I just wanted to add to that to consider in this proposal, the resources that can be leveraged through other community partners and other committed partners within our community. And I also wanted to highlight a concern that keeps percolating up in this conversation. When I hear about the development of relationships, that development of relationships is not, does not translate into more equitable data in terms of police contact in our city. So development of relationships to what end? To whose benefit? If it's not benefiting the communities in our city that are typically over-policed or the young people who have typically been over-policed, how are we not setting up a scenario that's very similar to what Sergio said? Where folks let their guard down and feel like this is an institution with which they can have a relationship with? And then later have what is a more typical interaction with the institution of policing? Are we setting folks up for harm in establishing these supportive relationships? I don't understand to what end and how that, to whom it, that is, who, who is that serving? And I think that I wish that that question had been answered.
Might behoove us to, you know, engage our partners with the police. I guess I would, I would think if you extend the concept of community policing that, which does have data, I don't know if it's here, but does have supportive data, that that's the premise. Whether it in reality acts, you know, it comes to, comes to fruition, I don't know. But that's something that we should pose with our partners.
Yeah, our Evanston's contact cards don't demonstrate that that's come to fruition. And if it's been 20 years, then you see better data than we saw in 2017 and 2018. And I also wanted to add to your point, Candace, about the board's responsibility. I think our responsibility is to request a proposal from you all in order to make a decision about resource allocation. I think that's a decision for this board to make and for our community to be a part of.
I also, I also want to add just a constraint that has to be in place. And I'm speaking obviously as a board member right now, but I've had over a decade of relationships with SROs very, very closely as partners. Police are trained to do a job. And our policies and how we view this issue, I don't think should impede or infringe upon their training as, as they take care of it. Because when I call the police, I want them to be able to do their job the way that they were trained. I want us to be better decision-makers in when we're choosing to call the police and being more judicious with that responsibility. And that's a complex question to answer because it, it is reliant upon a burden on staff who right now are behaving a different way. And that takes time and training and, and whatnot. But when you talk about battery, school and defiance, schools have battery and defiance all the time. Like it or not, there's battery and defiance on playgrounds all the time. There's defiance in every classroom every day. But we're not calling the police on everybody every time there's battery and defiance. And I think that's where we have to draw the line and decide, you know, how are we going to wrap around these children, these babies and respond to them differently than might be responded to them if it happens somewhere else in the community? Because we have that choice, we have the ability, we have a team of people at the disposal to respond differently, to have that wraparound care to, and loco parentis, respond as a parent might. Because most parents, when their children are maybe bat, you know, being defiant at home, don't call the police, right? We, we do it differently with love and care and kindness and compassion and patience and a little frustration on the side. So the.
Can I add to that, Joey? We respond with high expectations.
Yeah. But that, that's still on our plate, on our side of the decision-making. I don't think, I certainly don't mean to infringe upon the way that the police operate and train their, their team. Because when we have an adult who's irate in our building and we call the police to respond to that irate adult, I want them to respond the way that they've been trained to, to shut down the situation, right? Without having to think about it. I want them to partner in, in, in that way. But then be specific in some of the other ways that we choose to leverage that relationship.
I don't, do you, does our panel have any further questions or thoughts to add? Yeah, Piesha?
I do. I was actually going to speak during the public comment, but I can address it here. I want you all to know that I answer these questions with a group of people because these questions were presented to me. I, under normal circumstances, think that we should be calling the police on kids. This is me as a parent and me speaking for myself. And when I told you all that my first lesson was don't trust the police, that is the same lesson I give to my kids, all four of them. They already know how I feel about it. They know how their dad feels about it. They know how our entire family feels about it. And I say this knowing that one of my really good friends is an Evanston police officer. And this friend knows that if I'm out on the street and they are in their police car and roll up on me from behind, I'm going to react. They know this. And I'm also going to say that our new police sergeant is also a family member of mine. I still don't trust the police. There are a few things that I heard up here that I would like to address. And first, we are addressing this policy on the back of a child. I am disgusted by that. We are using this child's experience to address an issue that should have been addressed a long time ago. And I also want to say that Ms. Bartz, when you were making reference to how we handle children in these situations and that we need to give them space, that means that we are allowing the adults in the building to take a step back and not take responsibility for that child. When we are giving space, that is not the solution for all of our children. Yes, there are some people where if you are upset, you need to be left alone, but we don't know that. But when we're saying, and when you guys are saying, as the district, that this is something that we should allow to have happen, then we are saying to our buildings and to our staff members and to our teachers that it's okay for them to take a step back and not help this child. I'm not okay with that at all. We don't give space. And I know that, Meg, you said there are 750 teachers in the district. I am curious to know how many of those teachers were contacted or how many teachers reached out to you? Because if we have teachers that are pro-calling the police, answering these questions, that's an issue for me. We don't know. I'm not sure how the questions were presented to, to everybody. But if you didn't hear from everyone. But if you didn't hear from everyone, if you didn't hear back from everybody and everybody had the opportunity to answer the questions, I would be concerned about the people that actually, the teachers that actually did respond to you. I want to know where they stand on this issue. I want to know, are they saying that it's okay to call the police on six-year-olds? That's, I don't know.
We didn't ask that, that's not what we asked. What we asked was how do you see SROs? Like, that's what we asked. So we didn't ask that question. And these questions I got came after that.
Right. But if those, if those, if these teachers or staff members are pro-calling the police, then I would think that that would skew the answers that you have received.
Yeah.
But we don't know. That's the thing, is that we just don't know. We don't know where their, where their hearts lie.
That's true.
What we do know based off of the teacher feedback that had, some of the teacher feedback that came in meetings, is that teachers weren't pro-calling the police, they were pro-building relationships. And I do hear what you're saying, Anya, to what degree? What does that mean? What does that look like? A lot of teachers are in the business of trying to help make connections, or teachers are in the business of helping kids make connections and build relationships. So a lot of teachers saw SROs as an opportunity for us to build relationships with our community members, with the police officers. That's what they meant, not call the police on behavioral issues.
I understand. I still stand by, I don't-
I understand what you're saying. I just wanted to clarify and make sure that we weren't saying something different than what our teachers were trying to represent.
Okay. I also want to say that we are trusting that whenever we call the police, that these police officers have our best interests at heart. And we don't know this. And even, even if they have our best interests in heart and they have the best of intentions, this, we all know, means absolutely nothing in the face of the impact that it has to call the police. We know this. As a, as a parent, and I will give a little bit of my history, I am the fourth generation of my family to live in Evanston. We have been here for almost 100 years. I am fiercely protective of this community. So when things like this are happening, I am upset. I am angry. I am largely disappointed. And I bring this to the table whenever these things come up. I've spoken very openly about how I feel about these situations that are happening within our community. And I will not stop talking about these things that are hurting us as a whole. And this is for all of our children, not just our black and brown children, but also our white children that are seeing these happening, seeing these things happen. We need to be looking out for everybody. Thank you.
At this time, I would like to open for public comment. While Deela gets the sheet, the sign-up sheet, I'll just remind everyone, members of the public are welcome and invited to address the Board of Education during open public meetings. Speakers are discouraged from using the public comment period to air concerns about or voice personal attacks against specific district employees. Being mindful that the public comment period is not a suitable forum for fact-finding or resolution of disputes. Rather, we strongly encourage members of the public who have concerns about specific district employees to communicate with us following district communication guidelines available in our student handbook. Please remember, when you come to the podium, to state your name and that you have three minutes to address the board. Our first speaker, and I apologize, I'm having a little trouble reading the last name, Leslie Sampson? Okay, thank you.
Hi. I, I've been an educator for over 40 years. And I'm going to speak directly to reflections and values because I was going to talk about the procedure, but that's really not what this is about. If we really care about reflections and values, then why are we not doing restorative justice circles in the schools? I can tell you we're not. You may think we are, but we're not. I was trained to do them by Erica Barton, who's no longer doing them because it's been taken out of the police department. It has now been brought into District 65. And there were two people that were running it, but it's not being done. I had a meeting when they called me in September. It was never carried through. The children are not doing the circles unless there are wonderful teachers that were trained a number of years ago and are doing them. But no one is overlooking it. The children need to be going through the practice. The teachers need to be looked at and see how this is done. There are educators that could go back, we're volunteers, we're not asking for any pay. We would go back in there and see if this is done. Now, I really understand that, I mean, my heart is with educators, that they have so much on their plate. But the truth is, it's not being done. So the charge that Reverend Neighbors has suggested, I am charging you. Find out what's going on. Are the circles going on? If they need volunteers, let's get back in them and help review, go over them. Because the things that I learned in those schools were unbelievable. We, as adults, share in circles. And the kids spoke from their heart. It is not happening. Please. Thank you.
Next speaker will be Ally Harnett.
Good evening. I'm actually Jean Marie Friesy, and I'll be speaking on behalf of my friend Ally Harnett, who couldn't stay tonight. And I'll just read verbatim what she has written here.
Excuse me, can you lean into the microphone place?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. I'm Jean Marie, speaking on behalf of Ally Harnett. I'll just read verbatim what she has written here. I'm Ally Harnett, a school social worker in District 65, a parent and a white woman. I was raised in a time and place, the 70s and 80s, in small-town Wisconsin, where we believed that police officers were protectors who could be called on in any emergency and they would protect us, save us, or solve the problem. In my adulthood, I have left my hometown far behind in both geography and ideology, and I am now firmly rooted in Evanston in career, home, and raising my child. Ideologically, since the hometown ignorant beginning of my adult life many years ago, I have learned about systemic racism and how it affects our students of color in both micro and macro level ways. I have become increasingly committed to anti-racism and the need to strive to be an ally for people of color, thanks in part to many opportunities that District 65 has given me via Beyond Diversity Seed, Climate Team, and many hours of professional development. I recognize that I will always have a lot to learn and this work will never be done. In one of the learning opportunities that I had outside of the district at a standing up for racial justice meeting, we were all challenged to make a pledge to never call the police when a person of color is involved. This gave me pause, both because we do work with our SROs in the district and also as a mandated reporter, I am legally obligated to call DCFS whenever there is a reason to believe a child may have been mistreated, which can sometimes lead to police involvement. I have found this to be increasingly personally difficult for me in cases when the child is black or Latino, both because of racial disparities in police treatment of black and brown people, as well as because the school I work in has many families for whom their immigration status makes them fearful of any interaction with any law enforcement agency. As a school social worker, I am part of my school's crisis team and have been a part of many, many incidents where children were emotionally dysregulated and sometimes were escalated to the point of possibly causing harm to themselves or others or damaging property. I have drawn on my clinical training, the district guidelines, and experience to make decisions in these moments of crises, along with other adults involved in the situation. At the upper end of escalation, I have been involved in several incidents where the police were called and a small number of incidents where an ambulance came to the school to take a child to the hospital. Every single one of these incidents has been intense, challenging, emotionally draining, and impactful. And that was just to me. I can only imagine how much those feelings were multiplied, how traumatic the incidents were to the children and their families. The decisions to make, to make that call were never taken lightly nor quickly, and I do believe the decisions were made in what we believed were the best possible way. Given the information, I'm almost finished, given the information and resources we had at the time. However, were the decisions the right ones? In each case, we had definitely tried many other interventions at that point, and it was a big decision to make that call. In each case, the decision was based on this one important fact, though, that we felt we had reached the end of our road, that there were no other options left. I believe this must change, and I believe it can change. I believe we need better systems for triggering intensive psychiatric services that don't involve bringing in armed, uniformed police officer into contact with our children. One option that we do have, to call the SASS Screening Assessment and Support Services line, where a mental health professional comes out within two hours to evaluate a child. However, SAS is only available for children who have Medicaid. Privately insured children can't be evaluated by SAS. Regardless of insurance, if a child needs emergency psychiatric treatment, they have to leave town. Evanston has no pediatric psychiatrists, none who take Medicaid anyway. Evanston has no intensive partial hospitalization or inpatient psychiatric program for children. I'd like to propose an idea. What if we had a SAS-like option for all of our children in crises? Could we create district-wide emergency response teams of our social workers and psychologists who would be able to rapidly respond to incidents of extreme dysregulation? Dysregulation. That's just one idea. Could we be creative and think of several more possibilities for our school teams to use before engaging uniformed police officers? I think so. And I'll end it a little early because I know I'm over time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Jean Marie Fries.
That's-
Oh, that was you? Oh, okay, sorry.
I have to take my time to-
Oh, okay. So Carla Thomas?
Hi, good night. A month ago, shots were fired by District 65. Now, you may not see it as that, but as the parent of a black child, as the parent of a black six-year-old child, as a parent of the black six-year-old child who attend that same school, that bullet passed so close to me, I felt the breeze go by as it passed my air. Many others in this community today have spoken of the gross misuse of power in this case and the general lack of appropriateness of these actions taken on that day. So I will only add to those sentiments, ditto, a million times ditto. But I would like to use my time today to focus on intent versus impact. As the mother of two black children, I cannot tell you that I can't even leave my car in a no-parking zone with the blinkers on to run in to get a cup of coffee without my kids freaking out. Why? Because this society has taught them that numerous, through numerous and sad examples, that things just don't always end well when cops and black folks come together. So the thought of an encounter with a police, even for a non-moving violation, is petrifying to them. So let's talk for a second about the impact on any black child when they are confronted by a cop in their school with the purpose of restraining and controlling them. That child will never feel safe in that school again. They will never trust the school ever again. And the impact is not only to that child and their family, but to families who see themselves reflected in that family. They also don't feel safe. I now don't trust that my child's socio-emotional safety is of utmost importance at that school. I now struggle to trust that school with my child. Intent versus impact. We can play the SRO versus cop nomenclature game all day long, but as long as that individual is in a uniform and is armed, that is a cop. And a cop is what our kids see. I can only speak for my black kids and the trauma that such an incident would have induced for them and the many nights of nightmares and therapy sessions that it would have caused. And I do not say that lightly, and I do not say that as a joke. So if this district really understood impact as the true measure of racism and had some grasp of the realities of black trauma, that cop would have never been let anywhere near that child, especially since that child was calm by the time the cops arrived. The purported need was long over, and yet we allowed this struggling child to be further traumatized. This is not acceptable. The minute I heard about this incident, I dug up the policy. I needed to understand what the realities were for my child and every six-year-old in this district, if they were to start making decisions from their undeveloped frontal lobe, which all six-year-olds occasionally do. This is what I found, under the reasons a principal can call the cops: weapons, drugs, or observed battery against a staff member. So no one's going to push back on drugs or guns. So we are left with the word "battery." We are leaving one vague word, open to interpretation, to govern when cops are called on our babies. That is not acceptable. Can I have a show of hands of every parent who's been hit by that kid who's around six? I mean, and I want to put a foot up. If this were grounds for calling the cops, every block in Evanston would have their own personnel SRO. Then the police, then the, then the policy goes on to say that emergency services can be called in case of mental health crises. But again, the SRO, aka the cop, is on the spectrum of emergency contacts. So again, we have a kid with a mental health crisis who has a cop arriving to help instead of a mental health professional. This is not acceptable. Not today, not any day. So I'm not here to fire shots back at the district. I'm here to talk about how we can prevent this from happening again. I am here to hold up a shield, a shield of resistance. Parents of this district cannot accept this policy to stand as it is. This shield is here to protect all students of this district, but particularly those that are black and brown, who are more likely to fall prey to this situation. These shields can also allow the district to take a long, hard look at itself and its policies that are reflected by the shield. We have a petition signed by 400 families from this district, asking that, as the district has promised to do tonight, that we review our policies, but also that in the review of this policy, part of that team include people who understand black and brown trauma, in addition to the mental health folks and all the other things listed. That we continue to engage parents in this process, as Dr. Neighbors, Reverend Neighbors said, that this is not it for parent involvement. And that finally, when we attempted to forge a district history of calling cops on students, we were told that no data existed on this topic. We cannot improve anything that we don't track and measure and hold ourselves accountable for. So start a metric, track incidents of cops being called into schools, monitor it, and share those numbers with parents. Transparency is key to accountability. Calling cops on a six-year-old is not acceptable.
Our next speaker, and again, I apologize if I am not reading the last name correctly, Madeline Kimmini?
Good evening. I wanted to thank the people who've spoken before me. I think you've hit on a great many of the points that I wanted to make. I was taking notes as the board was speaking, as the panelists were speaking, as members of the community have spoken and have taken part in a lot of discussions online recently regarding policy in District 65. What it's doing right, what it's doing wrong, what it's not doing at all. And there were a couple of comments that, in particular, I wanted to make this evening with regard to the issues that are on the table. I believe it was Fuchsia who suggested, and I agree with the suggestion, that there needs to be oversight. Evanston seems to pride itself on transparency of all of its processes, and yet somehow there is no parental oversight committee that takes a look at records of discipline. She suggested that each and every school should be keeping very detailed records on the who, what, where, when, why, and that there should be a committee of parents that is involved in reviewing those documents and making decisions, making changes to the policy, making suggestions to the school board and to the district on how to remediate problems that are recurrent with specific teachers, administrators, schools, and/or students. So I wanted to thank you for bringing that up. I think that's critical, that we have parental oversight into the process of the school. Because frankly, the school district doesn't exist without the parents who have the kids that we're sending.[624.58][624.58](APPLAUSE). Thank you. And the reverend brought up an interesting idea, which is not a new idea, which is to have a summit. And again, it's an issue of transparency, of engaging the community on what we would like to see done differently, better, or begun. I took a moment before I came this evening to Google the number of current lawsuits against school districts in the United States, and it is staggering. And the policies of this district open the door wide for all kinds of lawsuits, of criminal lawsuits, of civil lawsuits, violations of civil rights, based on ability, based on race, based on police action. There are plenty of rubrics, someone mentioned a rubric would be helpful. There are plenty of rubrics out there on how to proceed effectively, how to proceed without creating lasting emotional distrust within the community, how to create effective outcomes. There are plenty of consultants out there who do this day in and day out, to help districts protect themselves and the families they serve from the kind of scrutiny that I don't think this district really deserves. I think that we're trying to get things right, but we can definitely be doing better, and including parents and transparency are probably two really good first steps.[722.63][722.63](APPLAUSE).
Our next speaker is Molly Roush.
I have you on the list later, if you want to.
She's practicing stepping out of her white privilege, and she's giving me the opportunity to sit down. So for those of you who don't know, I am Amanda Richardson, well-known in District 65. I have two children at King Arts. I wanted to tap on what Madeline spoke about, the parental committee, because I heard a lot of talk about relationship building, and you guys are not alone, and we are a community, and we need each other to make this happen. But I didn't hear any of you say anything about involving parents. I didn't hear parents at all in any of the policy, and I think you're going to be ineffective if you don't involve parents. There's talk about having these SRO officers and these professionals come in, but parents are the first teachers. Moms are the first teachers. Utilize those people that you have in the community that are willing to step up, that are willing to come into the school, that are willing to make a difference, that can connect with these children, that can establish relationships. I, for one, am one of those parents. I have walked literally through the hallway in my kid's school, and I have seen children having meltdowns in the hallways where no one else was around. I have personally stopped fights. I have intervened when children were attacking each other. I have been that person to step in and really be able to help. So I would like to see you guys utilize the parents in the school. Something else I wanted to say. The first question says, under what circumstances should we engage SROs? I think it's very, very clear tonight that never went into six-year-old. I also wanted to bring to light that it never should be when parents do step into the building. It's a travesty that the police have been called on a six-year-old, but I know that there are parents who get the police called on them when they step up to try to intervene and try to advocate for their children as well. And these parents that get the police called on them are black parents. So there is a running thread of the police being called on black children and on black parents. And that, again, is going to cause the district administrators, the school board, to do exactly what Reverend Neighbors said, and really look inside yourself and say, why is this happening? There should never be a time where police is called on a parent for advocating or a child who is having a meltdown. So again, I just want to reiterate, involve the parents. We are here, we want to work with you. Personally, I'm not anti-cop. My grandmother was a Cook County deputy sheriff for 19 years. I'm not anti-district, I'm not anti-teacher. I am anti-injustice, I am anti-racism, I'm anti-inequity, I'm anti-calling the police on a six-year-old or on a black parent. Use us instead of attacking us. That's what I wanted to say. Thank you.[904.54][904.54](APPLAUSE).
Next is Robin Brown.
She left.
Okay. Megan Shea.
She left.
Okay.
I haven't seen my mom.
Oh, no, okay. Carrie Shank.
Hey. Did I expect that?
I'm a school social worker at another district. I've been a school social worker for 15 years. I've worked in CPS for eight years. I've worked in a private school for three years. In one of my CPS schools, there was an SRO stationed at the door, and you can imagine that at the private school, of course, there's no SRO, there's no anything. And I also saw differences in the way that predominantly white schools on the North Side and CPS use police officers only when there's a crisis and when there's a direct threat to staff or students. But again, you know, at a school that was predominantly people of color, black people, there's a SRO stationed at the door. And I kind of want to sort of think about, I'm totally pro-teacher union, but I also recognize that I've sat in rooms with teachers who are afraid of black female five-year-olds. You know, I've sat in rooms where behavior plans and safety plans have racist language and racist descriptions of students, and where safety plans aren't developed with the mental health of students in mind. I think that when developing a policy around the use of SROs, well, first of all, I don't think that there should be SROs. I don't think that that relationship should be with District 65. If Skokie apparently isn't using them, I don't know why we should. And I think that—so where was I? So, yeah, so I think that you need to look at the mental health staff that are in your schools, too, when you're developing policies. I think that you need to include social workers, I think school psychologists, occupational therapists, because occupational therapists understand the regulatory and sensory needs of students and how that impacts behavior. So I think that these people need to be involved in crisis planning with students. I think that you need to increase the capacity of your teachers to deal with, not deal with, to support students who are in a crisis moment at the first line, and also to not engage in power struggles, which is a really basic thing that teachers sometimes have, can have a hard time with. Not all, but some. And, oh, and I think that if you're looking at students with their social, emotional, behavioral welfare in mind, and looking at them holistically as individuals, that your response would be a mental health-centered response. If you're looking at students in a fight-or-flight lens, where you're either afraid of them or you're angry at them, that's when you call the police. So I think that teachers and staff need to examine the lens in which they view students.[1157.33][1157.33](APPLAUSE).
First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming out. I know that for the PTA Council, we have seen the inequity over the years, and I think that something was really clear, especially at our January 2019 council meeting. Did you know that out of our, 14 out of our 16 districts, 65 schools, they actually have different prices and procedures for something as simple as school supplies? If we can't even give our children access, the same exact access before school even starts to school supplies, I already think that we've set the tone for inequity. And I know that the PTA Council strongly believes in this, and actually, we've changed our May meeting. Instead of doing a regular monthly meeting, we're actually going to do an equity training for all of the incoming 19, 20 PTA leadership to attend. As of today, I noticed that four schools still haven't registered. So I do want to ask, you know, the parents, can you go back to your schools, ask your incoming leadership, ask your equity committees, why haven't you signed up for this? Why can't we get all of our D-65 schools on the same page? And then, actually, I wasn't going to speak, but Sergio, what you said really resonated with me about, you know, are we being a savior or are we being a partner, supporter? Because you know what, it's not just our teachers, it's also the lunchroom staff, or even parent volunteers, or enrichment partners, external vendors. Just recently, I actually had a very heated exchange with a school vendor about a particular process, and I called them out on this inequity that I felt their process was creating. And I won't go into specifics, but let's just say they will not be invited back again to our school. When I was 11 years old, a white police officer actually stopped my mother and my siblings and I. And, you know, her immediate reaction was to tell us in Chinese, like, "Be quiet, don't move." And the police officer was like, "If you don't speak English, you should just go home to China." And, you know, back then, I remember shaking and being quiet, and I wish I could go back, and I wish I could yell at him and say, "This is my home," you know, regardless if this is a black child, a white child, yellow, brown, you know, he, she, them, this is our home, and Evanston is our home, and we shouldn't have to worry about their safety, especially when they're supposed to be educated. Thank you.[1334.22][1334.22](APPLAUSE).
Our final speaker will be Felicia Williams.
She left.
Oh, okay. Well, oh, Molly, did you want to—
Yeah.
Okay. You can be our final speaker.
I just want to say—
Can you just get up to the—
Sorry. As a member of the community where this incident happened, I would hope that the school apologizes to the family and to the child and to my child and to the entire community for the healing to actually start to begin. Because it is really fragmented right now, and there's a lot of distrust and a lot of anger and a lot of, people are mad, and we need to start healing. To be an anti-racist community, we need to take accountability for what happened. We need to address it for what it was, and never let this happen again, ever. Thank you.[1398.86][1398.86](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Thank you to all the speakers. Dot Ford, did you have?
Yeah, I just want to say a few thoughts. And first of all, thank you to one and all for putting voice out and to coming and engaging on these issues. I'll apologize. I'm sorry. And we will talk with the school community as well. You know, these are complex incidences that happen day in and day out in our schools, but we shouldn't be calling the police on a six-year-old. And we should be supporting our six-year-olds, as somebody said, our six-year-olds and our 12-year-olds across the board. And I think the clarity, there's several clarion calls that I hear that I will take with me tonight and tomorrow morning and then over the next few days. One is to think about the supports that our children need in our schools day in and day out, and to think about who are the appropriate people to do those supports, to provide those supports. Two is to come up with a plan, and come up with a plan that can address between now and the end of the year and then into the following year, the types of supports that we can provide. And we can do that, we can do that in a cost-neutral way, we can do that with some level of resources, and then we're going to have to figure out how to trade off, because we don't have unlimited resources. Three is to involve, and maybe this is first, to deeply involve the voice of parents and community, and to continue to do that, and to continue to do that, and to continue to do that. And that's on the development of a policy, everything from the development of a policy and the directions we go, to an education summit, to engagement around who we are as a community and where do we go. And then, four are the stories that are, that several of you shared of your own personal interactions, and how you don't want to have that happen for our children. And so I hear you on that. And I think we have to think about, as the adults in the community, as the elders in the community, how do we move forward and do the work that we need to do? And how do we do it in partnership with the police, where we can use, as Joey said, the police skills that are necessary? But how do we do that as partners throughout the community? And I think that's something that I will address as well. So we know that we're not going to have closure tonight, but we know that we, A, are making a commitment, as Rebecca put on the table, to work on the policy, and then, B, it's more important than just a policy statement. It's about how do we act on the work that we've been committed to on equity, the work that we've been committed on understanding each other, and how do we actually operationalize that moving forward? That's my commitment, that I will start to work on that as soon as tomorrow morning.
Thank you. And then I think, I know we still have a discussion before the end of this year about the revised discipline policy.
Discipline policy, yes.
So if we could get an update then on—
Sure.
I'm not sure. I think we still have to figure out in the calendar when that's happening, but we can talk about how we can come back and address some of this and how we're going to address it move forward to continue the conversation. Okay, go ahead.
So I know that in our discipline policy revisions, that it was explicitly stated that we were seeking to disrupt the school-to-prison pipeline. And I would like to see a value statement accompany any policy change that is equally committed, that we are not reinforcing any school-to-prison pipeline activity through the relationships that we're facilitating in our buildings.
Before you go, I'd just say, that's also a commitment that we've made in our equity statement and policy, and so I think that we need to make sure that we are following through on that commitment.
And we've talked a great deal, and we recently adopted the Equity Impact Assessment Tool. I think that would heavily be useful in this policy creation, but also as a reminder to involve stakeholders in having a transparent and authentic conversation. And I also would hope that anything that is brought to us, address not just SROs, but the involvement of police at all, including for traffic management—
Yeah.
—or any other reasons that our schools have historically involved the police, with a recognition of the impact of that involvement disproportionately on certain families.
This is a related, unrelated issue, but I think we're going to have to talk about it as a broader community. The Police Department has reached out and created several mentoring programs, the Officer and Gentleman Program, the STAR Academy, many of the police officers, males and females, coach and fam. And so it's an interest, as we ask the question of the appropriate role of police, we should ask the question about that as well. And again, it opens up a whole conversation for tonight, but I think it's a worthwhile one to think about, the role that the police are proactively playing in building relationships. And Anya, what you asked earlier, to what end, is a very good question that I think we need to think about and tackle, and then work with our police partners as well on that.
And I just want to clarify, my concern is police officers who are operating in their capacity as police officers, not individuals who may volunteer their time—
That's a fair distinction.
—to be a basketball coach, et cetera, but someone who is operating in their work capacity—
coach, et cetera, but someone who is operating in their work capacity as a police officer.
Yes. All that. Okay, so we will find a time and make sure that we continue this conversation. And, you know, I can't reiterate enough what has already been stated about involving families, community members, educators, administrators, students. I think that there's, there are a lot of stakeholders that should, can and should be involved in policy creation and figuring out. If we're asking, you know, what has happened to a student and what do students need, I think we need to ask students for some of that answer. So with that, thank you all for this discussion. I think it was an important one, and I think it does help us know how we need to start moving forward and planning our next steps on this. Otherwise, I adjourn this board meeting at 9:57 PM. Thank you all.